This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Well, let's go ahead and get started. As we mentioned at the announcements, this is the annual kind of overview of what we'll be looking at for street projects in 2019. And this is just an overview tonight of some of the, again, the bigger projects. It gives you an opportunity to ask some questions in a general nature. And then, of course, we will be on the road to actually going through the public participation process and feedback and approval of the actual projects over the next few meetings. So with that, Dave, I'll turn it over to you to walk us through this.
I put together a large packet for you, mostly to serve as a resource for this next year. If you have a constituent that calls up, there's aerial pictures of all the projects in here as well as overview maps. So I'll start out with the alley reconstruction. We have 13 alleys for this year. There is nothing really striking or out of the ordinary with the alleys, with the exception of the alley east of Russ Street, which is where the cursor is on that screen right here. That was brought forward with a petition, doing petitions for and against late last year. Council approved the petitions for, so we've gone ahead and surveyed that. We have heard feedback that there may be some additional feedback from the dissenting petitioners when we have a hearing for that, which will be next, which will be in two weeks. Otherwise, the other alleys were just about done with the poor alley condition in East Side Hill, and we have a few in Randall Park. Since we started the alley improvement program, and I have some, just some numbers towards in the back of the packet, but in 2015, when we started the alley improvement program, there was 34% of the alleys were good or excellent. We're up to 68% of them being improved. So there's only 32% that after we finish construction this year will be in the fair or poor category, but out of that 32%, 9% are unimproved grass, basically on the west side that aren't used. So we're only at 23% of all the alleys that are kind of falling apart compared to 66% when we started. So we're moving along with the alley program. There is an aerial of each alley contained behind the overview sheets in your packet, and I won't go through every one of those unless there's specific questions, but we have one east of Russ Street. Then we're on the East Side Hill between Emory and Woodland Avenue, between Emory and Hodgeboom as you go further west, between Hodgeboom and Eltuna Avenue, Roderick to Lee, another one, south of Hodgeboom in different block, between Margaret and Isabel as you're moving east. Eltuna to Sherwin, Margaret to Isabel. And then on the western side of the East Side Hill, south of Highland, north of Lindell, between Chauncey and Roderick. And then south of Highland to Lindell, Lee to Margaret. We do have one commercial alley, south of Brackett Avenue. This came up when we did Brackett Avenue, the property owners wished it to be improved. So this is a commercial alley. There's a lot of deliveries to the businesses. That'll be beefed up. Usually our alleys have two inches of asphalt. This one has four inches of asphalt. Otherwise, it's just a commercial type alley for that. And then we get into an alley south of Lake Street, over by Lake Street United Methodist. And actually, the north-south stretch that goes to the parking lot is not being redone. That was an alley that was partially vacated in the past. Shows the right of way for that. One, south of Hudson, north of Broadway Street, between Fifth and Fourth. And then this one's kind of a challenging one. It runs in with the parking lot behind, on Broadway Street, there's three apartments that look very similar. You go back there, it's pretty steep and it's in really bad shape, so it needs to be redone, but this one's going to challenge our design skills, I think.
Looks flat here. I don't know what you're talking about.
It's a pretty wild alley on the eastern end of it. So that's, it's right around the $250,000 worth of work. We typically put two inches of asphalt down in the alleys. We get a lot of calls from people with garbage trucks. Two inches of asphalt over six inches of base course is enough for just an occasional truck or an occasional garbage truck. If we were to have it open to vehicular traffic on a more regular basis, we would beef it up like the commercial alley, but we don't have typically concerns when people call up with a garbage truck going through once a week in our alleys, once or twice a week for that. Again, we don't do winter maintenance on our alleys. We will do some summer maintenance on the alleys that aren't done, but they're a lower priority for our community service folks to do that. We do add, frequently add storm sewer where there wasn't any before. A lot of instances, there's big puddles in the alleys, so we do put storm sewer in as necessary, and that's something the property owners don't, aren't assessed for. And we do have the alley reimbursement program again this year, so if you're an individual or a household experiencing low to moderate incomes and you qualify, the CDBG funds have been set aside and will pay for your alley assistance for that. I think that's the third year, third or fourth year that we have that.
And how widely is that used?
It's used every year for it. Frankly, the usage from what we had used to do, the city used to do in the past, was take the $60,000 or $50,000, whatever the funds were, and they would pay for the entire alley with that. So they would pay for three or four alleys worth with $50,000. Now it is, it's applied to all the alleys, and if you meet income requirements, you get that. So there are probably more instances along more alleys of individual parcels taking advantage of it. The total dollar amounts are less that I've seen come through for the reimbursement than when we were spending $50,000 or $80,000 of CDBG, but it seems like it's spread out. Because one thing that they were, that was taken into consideration was, if you do an entire alley with it, not everybody may be experiencing low to moderate income, or landlords or whatnot with that. And they wanted to make sure that people that really could use the assistance were getting that. So every hearing, we have people calling in, talking to our special assessment technician, and then they're forwarded on after information from us to finance, and then the finance department administers or helps administer the reimbursement for that. So I think it's been pretty successful with it. It does help when we get those difficult phone calls where I need an alley replaced at above a $600 assessment per property for an alley, but $600 is a pretty big deal in some instances for that.
It's allowed us to do a lot more alleys and still be able to assist people who needed that assistance. It's been a great adjustment.
So any other questions with alleys?
I was wondering, when do you decide to do a concrete alley versus asphalt?
We haven't done concrete alleys. We've typically been going in with asphalt. There is an alley between Barstow and Graham, right now behind those, that will be going by the transfer center that we probably, in a downtown commercial area, would be looking at concrete. But the majority of the alleys that we do in the neighborhood areas are mostly because of cost. Concrete is a lot, lot more expensive, and you typically want, if you had an alley, you'd want eight inches of concrete, and if you have four inches of asphalt, you could redo an asphalt driveway about four or five, or an asphalt alley four or five times for the same price as that concrete. So we, since I've been here, we haven't done proposal, a concrete alley, other than the aprons coming out onto the street where you get out to it. But we will, when we get into downtown, after the transfer center's built, and we start looking at that block that's behind, between Barstow and Farwell Street.
The one that you called out as being unique with the really steep hill in it, between Third Avenue, Second Avenue, north to Broadway, south of Hudson, how do you perceive making that maybe a little bit less of a grade or like? I know there's actually like a rental property that is face of the alley, like on top of the hill there.
When we do, when we do our alleys, you know, property owners do have water in their backyards. When we have the hearings, they talk with us, the grades aren't established through here. So with this one, the limiting factor is going to be those apartments and that parking lot through there, and we're stuck within our right of way. We're not going to go. So if they were going to redo their parking lot to, hey, let's, we'd like to lower this a little bit. But otherwise, our alley right of way is 14 or 16 feet wide typically. Some of them are 12, and that's about as wide as a lane on a highway. And there's not room to put a wall in, and you have to keep access. So we're pretty much matching back in, except that we do try to dip it, so we keep the water in our alleys in our right of way, and then it comes out to the street and we drain it, as opposed to in the past, our alley may have sheeted across on their parking lots or so forth. So we try to at least keep our water and treat our water ourselves. This one's a challenging one. There's power poles, there's some retaining walls in the houses that face Hudson Street. There's that steep parking lot. The alley's bad shape.
Are there any buildings in the right of way?
There are not in this particular alley that we're aware of. And then we do work, if there are encroachments in the alley, our code enforcement specialist will go out and talk to property owners. You may receive less than favorable feedback from constituents when it happens. Oftentimes, there's sheds and so forth in there, but we have to get those out of the right of way. They're not permitted in there.
What's the communication then with them so that they can plan for that?
Typically, we survey the alleys in the fall if we know we're going to, if there's not any issues. So after construction wrapped up this last year, November, December, our surveyors were out there. If they spot something, then we'll talk to that, to the property owners, and they'll be contacted in November, December timeframe. And then these alleys are typically in construction in June through September, so they have six months to remove that obstruction. If they don't remove it, then we can remove it and rebuild them for any kind of removal cost for that. We haven't had, so far in five years of alleys, I haven't had any that have moved willingly with their alleys, so.
So it's also good that we have the landlord licensing information, so we have people's contact information?
Yeah, and we have their, you know, we'll go knock on doors too. We get information from the tenants if it's a rental property. So we've been, it's gone pretty smooth for it. They're not always happy about it, but they understand generally like that. Any other alleys? I'd say we'll easily be wrapped up to our goal to having our alleys that are being used above that in the excellent to good range within the 10 years that we originally set out for alley improvement, so maybe a little earlier. This is the overall map, and this map is on our website also for constituents. It shows all of our projects, both the ones that will be brought to council for approval this year and carryover projects from last year. We have Lake Street and West Grand Avenue were approved by the city council last year. It was late in the year, it wasn't constructed, but bids came in higher than we had thought, and we rebid those late last year, and they were awarded earlier today. They're on the list for 2019, even though the money is coming from 2018. So I'll just go through, I have aerials for these as well. I'll go through and let you know of any issues that we're foreseeing coming up. Dort Road, it's just, it's a rural cross-section. There's curb, there's sidewalk on the west side. There's no sidewalk on the east side. There's no curb and gutter. It's on a bus route, so we're just proposing to bring it up to urban cross-section standards, as well as looping water main between Coop Road and Frank Street. Otherwise, it's a pretty straightforward project. It appears to be some rental properties on the west side of it, west of Clermont Avenue. Eddie Lane, this is a larger project. The railroad is making improvements at the railroad crossing between Western Avenue and Anderson Drive. So as long as railroad's in making improvements, we're going to be doing Eddie Lane, constructing it from where the pavement is deteriorated at Hastings Way to the Starr Avenue intersection. We've met with the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee on this. We're looking at making some pavement improvements, replacing the utilities, making some intersection improvements at Starr Avenue where we're considering an at-grade, where the intersection's like a tabletop intersection, we call it. There's no ramps, ADA ramps. The sidewalk is flush with the pavement surface in that area. We're going to make sure that that works with the large trucks coming out, but it's something that we're looking at for some pedestrian accommodations. The street will stay the same width. Should be able to look at having bike lanes that would connect Hastings Way with Starr, and currently on Starr going north, there, bike lanes go north on Starr over to Melby Street and back through the industrial park. And then squaring up Anderson Drive. The problem with that is XL Energy owns the property that is right here that we would need. So I talked with them, and they seem to be agreeable to not selling but having easement if we can square this up even just a little bit would help, but we'll have to coordinate that with how far out the railroad is doing their improvements. And then just improving a crossing, a pedestrian crossing here, that would be a little bit safer than crossing up here. One thing that we are going to get through is we're going to make a connection over the railroad tracks to the trail with the sidewalk that will be in with the railroad improvements. So you'll be able to cross on both sides of the railroad tracks to get from the west side to the east side now. Everyone's finished for that, so.
Will that intersection be shut down altogether, or will there still be access to Western or Anderson?
We'll have a detour coming up Starr for that, but it'll be, as we move through the intersections with the Western Avenue intersection, that'll be shut down, and then as we're doing utility work, we'll be on the other side of the tracks at Anderson and going west. And then Western, I would imagine, will be open with like a gravel surface, and then we'll have to stage it through there with the paving. The railroad will come in and just shut down the crossing, and so there won't be anything going across at that time with the railroad as well. So it'll be impactful, but as long as the railroad's in there, we figured we would be in for Eddie and Melby is the same as well. Utilities date back to the 40s and 50s in Eddie Lane, so they're getting to the point that we should be replacing them. Any questions on Eddie?
Yeah, I was thinking about maybe being able to reduce the number of lanes from the railroad track east a little bit, or?
Yeah, so you have two.
I know it's really wide crossing, crossing on the bike trail, and then also across Western from the trail to on your path.
So you have one lane of traffic over here. You have two that come in here. One comes across, one is this right turn lane where the right turn lane goes right into a lane. So we're looking to make room for the, the railroad won't widen this, so to make room for sidewalk on both sides here, we're looking at having this tape, instead of coming in with its own lane, coming in and merging, and then having a single lane that comes through here all the way through to Eddie like it's a single lane on this side. And then there'd be one lane that comes out. Try to reduce the radius here, but we still have to accommodate large vehicles. I'm assuming that there's not a lot, but this will shrink here. But yeah, going in here and then seeing that Melby, they have, the lanes are a little bit wider from a different movement when Hastings Way was 53 versus now they're coming across. At Melby particularly, they're coming from the bypass, going in Melby straight across, whereas in the past, those trucks were turning off of Hastings, and there's a dual movement on there, so. So yes, there is a, we are looking at that from Anderson to Hastings on the north side for the westbound traffic.
Question, one lane?
One lane, yep.
Do you think we could, it'd be possible to do any constraint or refuge islands of either the crossing of Western or Eddie?
At the crossing of Western?
For the, you know, for the trail crossing to go across Eddie, there's, I guess it'll be slightly narrower, or is it still?
It's something we could look at. I know the railroad, frequently they had islands in there also because they like to restrict traffic from going around the ends of their islands. I haven't seen their design here. When I was at the state, that's how the railroad would design that, so there may be one with their design. But we can, we can look at the width. We just have to stay within that footprint. If you look at the, if you look at it, you can see, and when you're out there, there's a concrete crossing on the, on the, there's a concrete crossing on the, on the tracks. And you can't, if you widen it, it gets into six figures to widen. So if you stay within there and basically get your width from lanes that you perhaps don't need anymore, which you don't, then it makes it economical to be able to do that. But if that median island pushes it out wider, then I probably wouldn't, I guess it would be a decision. So this, so our total sidewalk has to lie between this point of the width where you see in this tip here. So this lane that is taken up, the sidewalk, the back of sidewalk will be where the tips of the fingers are on there, and everything has to come in. If you get something less than three or four feet for width, it's not really that advantageous, and it busts up with maintenance and so forth. So having some kind of a refuge island here, the arms, the crossing arms will likely be here. So I mean, it's something we can look at for it, but there are challenges more than just putting it in there because we are constrained by the width here.
Interesting.
But it'll be, this one will, the safety improvements that the railroad is doing at their nickel that we only have to pay for signing and our community service folks will make the signs for, will be quite its own combined. So it's about $300,000 to $450,000 worth of improvements the railroad's making.
Wow.
Forest Street? So we had a very good discussion at the last, last meeting with BPAC. We have not been to the Neighborhood Association with us, although Jeff Pipinger, when he was there, talking about the project, had mentioned the Forest Street project. We're going to reconstruct it in the existing footprint. New utilities through there. Sidewalk on the east side, we're looking at having a possible widened sidewalk on the west side with the Veterans Trail or the Veterans Memorial. Being on this side, I think this whole area is going to be used a lot more with both pedestrians, and we want to have a connection from down here for bikes up to the High Bridge Trail. So it's not through here at Heisen, but we're going to try to reconstruct as far up as we can, hopefully Sarah Street with the street. So when the Veterans Trail is done, the street is done, we're looking at having, we have small parking lots in here. The Veterans Trail is using this here and this area up here that will be done with construction in this area. We can't go all the way up to the High Bridge itself because we have to keep cascade tissue trucks coming out because they cannot go over the Eddie Street Bridge, and that's the only other way out of that area. So we're going to do as much work as we can, get the trail, a better trail connection up to the High Bridge Trail, bring it down. We're looking at having, because of the large truck traffic, it's a local street, but if there's a large number of trucks that use it, looking at possibly restricting parking on the east side, having bike lanes on the street for the bike meters that would use us for the neighborhood, having parking along the west side along the park on there, and then whatever width there is for a possible trail, whether it be eight or 10 feet. So the bicyclists, if they want to connect down from the High Bridge to this area, they're not, I guess we're not, they would be able to bike through the Veterans Memorial Trail, but they wouldn't, they would have an option where they wouldn't necessarily be intertwined with pedestrians like we have. Otherwise, pretty straightforward project, a lot of utilities, a lot of old utilities in there.
A footnote on this, that we're coordinating this with the Veterans Tribute folks and their fundraising, and because there's some advantages to having the work being done on the street and the project, the tribute project at the same time. It looks like they will meet their fundraising goal to be able to do, to be able to pay for their work at the same time. We've given them some deadlines that we'll work with our constructions. If for some reason they do not make their fundraising goal and have to put it off a year, then it'd be our recommendation to put this off a year so that those two projects can be coordinated. At this point, we're optimistic that both will happen this year, but just want you to be aware that contingency or possible contingency.
Will a lot of that truck traffic and bus and city vehicles be pushed to Hobart then, or?
Probably, we're looking at, you know, restricting parking around Sarah Street, so going through, I mean, we're going to be having to go through the neighborhood, but I'd like to get people up to the traffic signals at Barstow Street. Hobart Street, you don't have the signals to get out of the neighborhood. So we'll have to do some construction-wise parking restrictions, maybe come down, come down Sarah to Hobart, and whether we get over to Barstow and down this way, or if we come down, we have to look through, but we'll have to, Hobart's fine if you're making a right turn, but if you're going to make a left turn, you have to get out to Barstow Street. So there will be, all those trucks and everything will be going through the neighborhood. If it gets to be a problem, what we would do is we would temporarily put up some four-way stops through there just to try and slow people down if they get too much of this movement. But I think it'll be, once people get used to it, and especially they'll start all going on Slara, this is not an overly fast corner here, so it'll kind of set the tone coming into that area.
The trees still show.
Oh, yeah, our alley out there. So then there's just some comments for better way, if I need to get what it's done with the bicycle users, the trail users, especially when it's not that familiar, to get them off a trail here and even off of here, better connection for the trail that goes under Madison Street. So we'll work on trying to improve it and make it more intuitive with the signing for people that are coming through that may not be that familiar with it.
Is the parking lot part of this plan too, then? The redo of Forest?
No, we're all done with what we're doing here. The last portion that, the original plan is called for some extra parking lot here, but we can't do that because of the FEMA lanes. So that's why it was pulled back to where you see here instead of having the three quarters.
No, I mean the parking lot off of Oak, the opposite.
The little drive-in?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would try to do that with this, with this project, courting with community services.
And the later phases of the Memorial Tribute will include a parking lot and restrooms up at the north end.
We have to keep everything within the right of way, so that's why it's basically enough for the community gardeners and maybe trail users or whatnot. Maybe eight, 10 parking spaces in there?
Can you speak to the levee and so much the, I mean, I know it's not a flood control levee at the moment. How do you see a trail potentially going?
On the top of it.
On top of that, and what, how many years in the future you think that would be?
Well, we, so we were helping the veterans folks with surveys, so when our surveyors were out there, they surveyed all the way from Forest Street down to the ordinary watermark down in the river. We're going to be looking at, I believe, I believe it was this year in 2019, to start looking at the design on that. And DNR does have a program for flood control that it's an every other year application. And so we'll be, that's one program we know of, but we would like to look at the RV Corps, if there's FEMA, if there's whatever, DNR, whatever we can have to get that levee up to engineered, maybe 500-year standard, and certainly at least 100-year standard through there. When that's done, then I could certainly see a trail coming in front. The connection will come in front of central maintenance. Part of it could continue along a widened sidewalk, you know, if it's more on the eight-foot width, and then have a trail on top of the levee, and then you'd have a walk between. So you'll have three routes in this linear green space.
Well, why is that needed?
10 years from now.
Because the Veterans Trail's going to be a walk and bike trail.
It'll be a walk and bike trail. We get a lot of complaints with, not complaints, but feedback on all of our trails with the intermingling between the walkers and the, so if you look at the federal standards, if you have a true dedicated for walking and biking both, it should be 16 feet wide. That's why the new bridge over the river is 16 feet. If you have eight or 12 feet, you can ride, and you can ride sidewalk. This is an area we can ride bike on sidewalks, on a five-foot sidewalk. But as we get more and more people walking and running on trails and more bicyclists, I think the more options you have for that, the levee itself, I don't know if we'll have it reconstructed within five years. Levee offers better views of the river than along Forest Street. Forest Street would give you a more direct route if you're coming into this side.
It's a potential to explore.
Yeah. So any other, that's the Forest Street. So that'll be one of the more expensive ones. If this doesn't go, then there's a project on Riverview Drive from Melish Court up to the park that we're looking at. This is Ninth Street, James Street from 11th. It's a, it's a narrow street that has sidewalk on the back, a curb, it's got utilities that are approaching 100 years old. We're proposing to put it back the same dimensions that it is now, just with new utilities. It's in rough shape. So it's part of trying to get into more utilities up to the new condition, and the pavement is deteriorated. Lake Street, this, these utilities are over 100 years old. This is in front of Schlegel Milch from Farwell to Dewey Street. So we want to improve that before we're using the Schlegel Milch lot for temporary transfer center, as well as there are. Um, as well as there are, the property owner where the curse is, is right here, is having some storm sewer problems with some, some water. Uh, so we're looking at replacing that. This is in the concrete pavement district, so we're proposing concrete pavement through there. Um, we'll have curb cuts going into Wood Motor Lot that will facilitate a temporary transfer facility. We're trying, the, the project on Lake Street over here last year was approved with bike lanes that stopped here. We're looking at trying to extend the bike lanes to Dewey Street. So if you're coming from the Randall Park neighborhood, across Lake Street Bridge, up Lake Street, and you want to go north or south, you can go over Dewey and go north and south for a stretch instead of trying to bike on Farwell Street if you want to bike on the street. Otherwise, it's pretty mu, a pretty typi, we're not, pretty typical downtown street. We're not proposing the high streetscape aesthetics like, um, like what we have on the other block. We are looking at extending, um, our white way lighting, anticipating, um, and it would be one or two of the taller 30-foot lights, anticipating some more pedestrian usage in and out of the, and the transfer center to get it a little bit better lit, um, for that. Any questions on that?
The traffic will be routed down, um, uh-
It'll, it'll probably gray receiver, it'll go around. We probably will have signs up on Main Street to bring people down to the, um, the, the biggest user is probably the Mont, the Montessori school here. And so we'll have to coordinate, Dewey Street will be open for the majority of it, so people will, will kind of go out and around, so. Lake Street, this was approved last year, re-bid. Um, we, we had $4,000 worth of bid savings, letting the contractor do it this year instead of trying to complete it in a month and a half, two months like we had last year. Um, ends up if we would have started last year with this closed November was, we may have been caught in a very undesirable, um, um, situation with the street, um, over the winter. Um, so we, this will go this year. Um, it's going to be very difficult to get from Phoenix Park to Owen Park on a bike next year with the construction of West Grand Avenue and West Grand Plaza. Lake Street, River Walk will be under construction, so we're working on a detour route, so it's clearly marked to get bikes between. Um, no work on the, on the bridge here, so we're going to try to keep the sidewalk open as much as possible through here. But there will be times when the sidewalk is closed, especially when we're making the River Walk connection up into this area. Um, this will start after the Memorial Day weekend, um, so we can use it for the Memorial Day parade. And then should go relatively fast, but we're, we'd like to have it wrapped up by the time students arrive in August, so approximately three months. These bike lanes, this is, this is kind of a ugly scary, um, barrier type street now. And I think when we're done, um, it will still have the same amount of traffic, but I think it will be a, a much more, um, calm street to try and cross through, so hopefully it comes to fruition.
Is anything going to be done about, in the way the street's designed, about being able to, to see onto Farwell? Cause there's that, it seems like there's, that church is in the way, and if you're, especially at night, if you're pulling out, you almost have to pull out into Farwell just to make it, like just to be able to see down the street.
Yeah, no, there's, um-
Have you noticed that?
It's, it's very tight when you have the zero setbacks at intersections for that.
I don't know if there's any way the street can be designed to give you more-
The, the only way you get any additional sites around here is if you remove lanes on Farwell, so you bring your stop line a little bit further than that. Um, it's, it's just really tight in there. Um, other than if you're, you know, I suppose you could do something if you shift it over, over into here, it would give you a little extra distance when you're in, you know, purchasing parking lot.
Yeah.
This is, the project was approved where it's pretty much a curb line.
Same thing.
Same location, a little bit narrower, but within a foot or two of where it is currently up there.
What do you foresee in terms of the, the Lake Street Bridge and then, and then Lake Street west of the Chipover, or aligning with the bike lanes?
So we'll, we'll bring that, there's not a project there, it's on the chip seal list on, on Lake Street. So the pavement markings are going to be covered over, except for the two-block section that was recently redone. Um, to get, if we extend Lake Street, cause there is a system connection, um, argument to be made to connect bike lanes to Fifth, uh, which is a north-south arterial, um, that you would have to remove parking from one side of Lake Street, and then you would be able to make that connection, um, of all the way from Dewey Street, basically to fit the avenue with bike lanes. But you wouldn't be able to do it without restricted parking. So when we get through with our street hens projects, we'll bring that parking restriction. And if that parking restriction, or if that's the direction the council wants, um, then when it's chip sealed, we'll re-stripe it with bike lanes and make that connection across the bridge also with that. So, um, it won't be a CIP project, it won't be special assessments, it'll be part of a maintenance project that Community Services does.
Great.
If it doesn't go, then when it's chip sealed, we'll go, um, Sherrill's on Lake Street probably to show that connection between bike lanes and, and, uh-
It seems like either, either way with regard to the parking restrictions, how that, that may be decided. Um, that block just, what, like it seems like the bridge and then the block west of, uh,
Possibly the river.
Both, both of those already have parking restrictions on both sides, so those, at the very least could be changed, is that correct?
Yeah, then, then it would spill into Sherrill's when you get through that, you'd have bike lanes out of what County Gulf Road does. Um, so that, that may be an option on there as well. But we have a lot of configuration because that intersection's set up for four lanes of traffic through there. So there's a lot of tapers that have to be done with those islands to, to make it work too, so. Yep, that's on our radar for this, for this year. Lincoln Avenue and the Third Ward, um, there are some main breaks at it. Um, it's just old utilities in this area, even though our GIS says that they're new, um, they're actually really old. There's some run intrusion into the sanitary sewer there, um, so we're just going to be replacing that when we're working on State Street. Melby Street, again, trying to, um, improve the pavement each side of the railroad crossing. Uh, to try to get a, right now there isn't a connection to the trail, so you have the old lane trail here, and you can see where people are walking through here. So we have an extra lane of traffic where this, this turn lane comes into a toll lane, and then you have your through lane. Trink one lane of traffic, add sidewalk in here, so you can come from the sidewalk on Melby, cross, and you can get to the trails on both sides here. Um, to try and make that connection. Um, and then a full pavement replacement and whatever utilities are in that short corridor. Um, if we don't do one, the railroad's in there, we have to pay for railroad flaggers. Um, and insurance, I think that's like 500 or a thousand dollars a day that we have to pay to have a certified railroad flagger flag traffic, construction traffic for the tracks. So, um, that's why we try to do it, try to double up our efforts with the railroad.
Do you do Melby and then Eddy, or Eddy and then Melby, they would be at summer time?
We'll try to, we'll try to coordinate them with the railroad. Um, if we don't, the railroad's not always easiest to coordinate with. Um, I'd like to get it done with schools out for both of those, more so for Eddy than, than Melby.
Access to the airport.
Yeah, one of the, the railroad won't shut both of them, they shouldn't shut both of them down at the same time, but, um, we won't want to shut both of those out, definitely, so. River View Drive, this stretch has new utilities, it's, uh, it's going to be a melon fill, there's some poor pavement condition in this stretch. Um, same with us out there now, there's a hill, so we, we're looking at seeing what we could do to widen so we'd have shoulders for, um, for bike, bike riding. But you, you are in a fairly steep hill where you're kind of pinched in, so there's not a lot of ability to do that cost effectively like we were able to on Airport Road. But there'll be new pavement here. We originally were going to go all the way down to, down to the park here with just a melon fill on the whole stretch. But working with our community service folks, this Airport Road, or River View Drive is, um, has some really bad utilities in it. Both sanitary and watering, so, um, that leads us to this project that was going to be a very inexpensive mill out, the top surface, put the inch and a half or two inches of asphalt down and be out of there. So this whole stretch up to the Airport Road would be done as a good detour route for the neighborhood when we do River View south of there. Now we're, it's looking like we're into a full reconstruct. When we're into a reconstruct, we start talking about curb and gutter and sidewalk through there. Then neighborhood in, when our surveyors were out there surveying, clearly expressed a non-desire to have, um, sidewalk and curb and gutter.
Interesting.
I don't have the time to keep the other projects on track and engage with the neighborhood to bring these, this project forward in February or March. So I'm going to get through State Street, start working with the neighborhood. So this may be a project that is brought forward towards the end of the year, bid and then constructed right out of the gates next year, um, around the Marathon, because this is a Marathon route too. So, so once Marathon's done, try and do this, um, my original-
Put it in 20 instead of 19.
In 20, yep. It'll, it'll have some 19 dollars, but it'll be 20 construction for it.
Dave, is there a, is there going to be a traffic speed assessment done on, on both of these River View Drive? As long as it's part of that, obviously that brings us further into 2020 and more assuredly. But, um, I guess I'm just concerned about the 35 mile per hour speed limit that's currently posted out there.
I guess we can, if, we haven't, I haven't taken calls for it, that speed's a concern up there. Um, it's certainly something that when we have meetings with the neighborhood, they usually, um, express that. It's something that we can, we can look at.
Do you know that there's at least one resident that has one of those plastic people that has a-
What do they?
That says something about there being children in the neighborhood, so.
So this is probably the most likely stretch. I don't know that you're going to have too much of a problem here, there's, it's a lot more, um, sparsely, um, sparsely, uh, residents lived here or populated. Um, you're going to have problems if you're a little slower than what's supposed to, if you're 25-mile long hill, I mean, there's no way of me able to keep it in Forest. This is the neighborhood, so that's something possibly. They, they walk in the street currently, I would anticipate the, the speed self-regulates with the pavement condition up there, is what you've heard.
It's still unsafe.
So this one is, this one is going to be right up there with Keith and Pat from last year, um, with sidewalk through there. I'm just giving you guys a heads up.
Dar, cars travel fast, there's no sidewalk, it's just not safe. And I guess people might just avoid it.
The, the feedback that I've taken from people, senior surveyors out there, is that they like the rural nature of their neighborhood in the city and the proximity, similar to a lighting concern that we had across the-
Across the river.
Um, I have a staff member that grew up in the neighborhood up there, and she said, "Yeah, they're not going to light sidewalk." Sidewalk in there, so I'll look at it, um, but I, I don't want to bring anything to the council without talking with the neighborhood and at least having that discussion with them. So this, it won't be possible to do that before we get the other ones through, through the council. So this one has a potential to be contentious, but it'll be later. And it'll, it'll come down to just a, the project needs to be done, whether it includes sidewalk or not is a philosophical question, I guess, for what benefit it adds to that neighborhood.
To make a case for sidewalks, I had a, um, friend who used to live in O'Clare, who now lives in Colorado Springs, visit over the holidays. And she was just like raving about how easy it is to walk around our city. And apparently Colorado Springs needs a good planner like you, Dave. Uh, because they have sidewalks that stop and end abruptly, and there's, there are busy streets that don't, that don't have sidewalks. And they have a dog and, and they say it's just impossible to walk their dog around, even in a big city like that. And, and she, they're actually moving back to O'Clare, so they're very excited to be able to use our sidewalks and street systems here.
Well, I mean, I, I kind of have the mindset that, um, if you're in a, in a city, you should go into it assuming, you know, regardless of ordinance, you know, ordinance requirements and so on, you should have sidewalk on both sides. I mean, there are exceptions to every rule, but that's how we look at it. It's not always real popular when we go fill in gaps. Um, but if we see gaps, or if they're brought to our attention, we try to bring it forward and, and fill the gaps for that. Um, there's, there's always gaps that we're made aware of, but, you know, I mean, we, we try to do a pretty good job with it. Um, that's, that's, yeah, that's one of the tougher ones, sidewalks and, uh, parking are the two that are the most contentious, more than special assessments, so. So our goal is to have both sections of River View Drive done before we reconstruct River View Drive from the park, the north side of the park down into the neighborhood itself, because that will be, in the future, that'll be like a short street conversion where it's a real cross-section. We want to have curb and gutter on that, and then have a trail along one side that connect the neighborhood up to the park so you can ride bike up there. And we've been talking about parking along the water treatment plant side for boats and for if there's events up there. So that'll have a, a larger improvement on that stretch of River View. But I wanted to make sure that the, the north road was acceptable to drive on before, um, we, we closed off the south end.
Is there enough right-of-way on River View to be able to do sidewalks without having to develop easements or?
Um, yeah, it should be, I believe it's a 60-foot right-of-way through there, so, yeah, you can get a narrower street, uh, you can park in one side of the street. If you have a 30-foot street or a 32-foot street, you have 10 feet of sidewalk, you have room for a small boulevard in there. Sixth Street, this is, uh, down the road from Temporary City Hall. Um, some older utilities, the pavement, it, it's 60, 70-year-old pavement, it was chip sealed, so the pavement's not in real tough shape. Um, but it is cracked, or if you get out of your car and look at it, there, there's alligator cracking in there. Um, so it's, it's within a few years of, of, um, starting to have some potholes. Um, more prevalent, once it starts to go, it's like pulling a, a thread on your sweater, you get a bigger hole. Um, utilities, it's got concrete, sanitary pipe that have run intrusion into it. So this isn't too far from the, the backups that we had on other streets last year. So, um, I have some numbers in, in the, in the back of the packet, but, um, where we have the luxury that with our street condition, um, we've had, um, we've had, uh, back in 2014, uh, for streets, 86% of our streets were in good and excellent condition. Right now, 92% of our streets are in good and excellent street condition. So, um, this street here rates in the fair range, uh, for when you drive on it, but the utilities are, are needed to be replaced. So that's something that's, that people, sometimes that aren't happy with their special assessments will come in and say, you know, "Give us another five years with the street, the street can handle it," which it could. Uh, but oftentimes underneath, we're trying to be an organized, routine replacement for the utilities. So, I mean, we're just one year, the one that had the backup last year was on the docket for that summer, you know, for, for three more months. Um, so we're just trying to do it organized so we don't go feast or famine, we methodically work through our older utilities. So nothing out of the ordinary with this, looking at putting it back the same as it is currently. Um, Spring Street, this has over 100-year-old utilities in Birch Street. For the last four years, we've been doing one of the cross streets a year in the Birch Street area. Putting it back like it is, um, new utilities, um, not widening, not, not, um, shrinking, just, uh, reconstructing through there. Uh, residents on this street will be eligible for the lead line, um, service replacement program. Um, it's estimated that there are a number of lead line services here. So that will help, um, get some of that money going to property owners, um, when we do the street. Pretty straightforward, this is a big one, um, State Street, this is going to be most contentious.
Dave, do you mind going real quick to the, uh?
The Street Street?
I'm looking at the very end of it to the north where the railroad tracks, and there's, seems to be like, uh, that was just pretty far off the end of it with gravel. How, how do you plan on kind of rounding that, that end of the street off that end? Cause it seems a little, um, informal right now.
Yep.
It seems to be almost a path across the parks.
What we plan to do is put a cul-de-sac on the end, similar to what we have here, down a couple streets down from it. That is actually, that, that driveway and a lot of this is on railroad property. So it's not on city property, it's on railroad, um, so I'm not going to get in the middle of that. But we will put a, our cul-de-sac within our right-of-way. Um, we'll have the diamonds, the red diamonds at the end of it, so people don't drive through it. And then there'll be a curb cut, uh, within our right-of-way that will allow them to do that. And if the railroad wants to remove that access, that can be up to them. But it'll look very similar to, to this.
Okay, thank you.
That's Spring Street, State Street. We've been having, we have our next January round of public interaction tomorrow, starting at the Third Ward Neighborhood Association. We're, right now, we're looking at examining and getting running the numbers that are running by Hamilton, at MacArthur, at Lexington, and at Roosevelt. The three roundabouts up in the Putnam Heights, it actually, there's a stop sign, there's a four-way stop here. And then there isn't stop control here except on the side street, but State Street goes through. The miles on the roundabout, see if we put a roundabout here, if you start here and you have three roundabouts, by the time you hit the bridge, you're actually going through, um, at the same speed or a second or two faster than if you're hitting, at peak hour than if you're hitting this and you have those, the traffic that delays through there. It improves the, it improves- It improves the, it improves the overall delay. It reduces it here. So, hardly queuing at Hamilton, we have the four-way stops now. These roundabouts are very similar to the one on Gulf Road and Rudolph Road, single lane on there, pretty straightforward. This one is not. That one is, that one makes, is, been about the most well-received proposal because it fixes almost everything that people hate about the intersection. We do have it on our website. All of the materials that we're reaching out to the public with, we have a, a layout for it. And up at Lexington, we do have an option that is very popular with people, surprising them, but they would not have guessed it, that only requires right-of-way. And this is the first draft. It's a lot smaller. These islands are smaller. So, these islands here are more like this, that we're trying to refine it. It doesn't take any right-of-way from these three. This was squared up a little bit. It takes some of the land out of J-Set Park. Fire Department is, the fire chief doesn't have any issues with it. All the right-of-way comes from here. The small usage of the playground equipment has been requested to move down to the intersection of State and MacArthur, where the city owns two lots on adjacent corners on there. The residents have said that it would be much easier to be used at those intersections. So, we would move the, the playground equipment there, add, add some picnic tables up in this area. So, the trailer users that are coming in using it for picnicking would still be able to use it along Clermont if, if this were approved. This takes an absolutely horrible intersection on a grading scale for how traffic flows through routes. A being the best, F being what you see around Gulf Road or on Oakwood Mall during the holidays, and all over fifty-three, through there is an F. This intersection gets all As except for a B. In the evening, you have an average of six cars will be backed up here waiting when you're having the flurry coming out of the Third Ward going this direction. It gets an A coming this way, where right now, it's, it's an F when you go, if you're trying to make that left turn out. Pretty radical. I wouldn't have expected this because we did have an option that placed it over the center of the intersection. That is much more what you would expect, and people didn't like it. Speed's slow. But the other, the other one that I just showed you gets a little, feedback was that it still has traffic real close to the houses in the vicinity of the intersection through here. The other one, we had a little bit more green space in that intersection instead of being so concrete-laden. So, that's going well. We're still running numbers on the roundabout. The fourth one is the roundabout down at Roosevelt. And we're running numbers because for, there is, there has been a lot of feedback that they do not want, the public does not want a bottleneck created on State Street. They like improvements and safety improvements and traffic to get through there. But I've been getting a lot of very vocal feedback saying that they don't want to have traffic backing up the hill from roundabout down here. So, we're modeling it. That, that right-of-way is extremely tight there. That's a lot smaller right-of-way than we have in the Putnam Heights. So, we went into this thinking that we would do some safety improvements without a roundabout in that intersection. We looked at the roundabout, and we're still getting delay numbers back on that. So, we would be able to say, "You're going to be delayed twenty seconds, fifty seconds. You're going to have traffic queued up." We want to make sure we don't have traffic, if there is backing up, we don't have traffic backing up into the signals because of that, that current safety. So, those are what we're looking for, intersection improvements. And then we're looking at, it's been well-received to restrict parking on State Street. There is parking about two-thirds of the route now. People typically park up there very heavily, but we want to get an on-street bike connection going down the hill into the Third Ward. So, it's very heavily biked in the summertime. And then also, we'd like to get wider sidewalks going up the hill because it'll be a lane of traffic each direction on the hill. So, whether it's a sidewalk on one side, a twelve-foot trail on the other, or two eight-foot sidewalks, or two twelve-foot trails, we're going to try and get wider, wider facilities going up the hill with that. This will be coming, this is the, the most vocal project that is consuming our time right now. This, I have it tentatively scheduled to be on the first reading, the last meeting in February, and then the hearing, the first meeting's in March.
So, I have a couple of questions. I've heard a lot of opinions about this street already. Clearly, people are really interested in that. And a lot of skepticism whether four roundabouts is right for this street. Can you repeat the, it would be helpful to have something to tell people of why we're considering four roundabouts. Can you repeat what you said about the time saved or potential time to save?
So, there's different reasons for the roundabouts here. So, this one, we're starting to have delays at Hamilton. If you go through there in the peak hours in the morning at night, it's not uncommon to see traffic backed up in the evening, back two blocks on there. So, this one, it's starting to increase with congestion. It's slowly increasing, but... So, this one would help with the congestion that you're seeing at night. This one, we have a safety concern on, on MacArthur. A lot of feedback making this left turn through, through traffic there. So, we're, we're not having traffic stacked up here now. We're not having the same thing that you have with the four ways now. But we are trying to be proactive and have kind of a calming on MacArthur and State. The whole thing would slow the traffic on State as well. But this would be to allow safer movement, to be a little bit proactive safety-wise. This one just, I mean, that intersection speaks for itself. I mean, I would say that was...
That's the one that people are like pretty happy about, is what I'm, what I've heard. Everyone really sees that one as a problematic intersection.
These ones here, the only, we had one, at least with our written feedback, and even at the open houses where people are questioning, you know, "Are they too close together? Is that, you know, why did you pick three?" And it's just because those are the collector routes there, the busy routes that are going through there. But when you, in the peak hour, when you have most of the delay, you're getting through here, you're keeping your traffic capacity. So, the same, and actually probably more cars will be able to get through there when we're done with construction. The Roosevelt is, is different because there's a lot more traffic down there, it's a different pattern. So, that's why we're being so careful. We don't want to create a problem down at Roosevelt inadvertently with that.
Dave, you have models that during peak periods, it takes a certain, like if you're going from here down, down the hill, right now, at peak periods, that takes a certain amount of time. If there were three roundabouts, what does that do to the time?
It's virtue to Clermont Avenue, it is about the same or like two seconds quicker going through there.
With the roundabouts?
With the roundabouts. And largely going on State Streets. And that's just on State Streets?
But, but it eliminates the backups.
It eliminates all the backups here.
About the same time period, but you've eliminated the backups.
And improved safety.
And you have the safety, better safety issues at MacArthur.
And that's here, it speeds this up considerably. That's only the, your State Street traffic, your Hamilton traffic. Instead of standing there for ten or fifteen seconds, you have like a two-second delay. So, it actually makes it quicker going this way, MacArthur, and it's extremely quick to go here. The problem we're having here, right now, it's modeling on Roosevelt. You wait, and I think it models pretty accurate. It says you wait, on average, seventy-eight seconds to cross State Street on Roosevelt during peak hour. Which I think anecdotally, if you're down there a little over a minute, you're waiting for a gap to get out through there. When you put a roundabout in there, the initial number is to say that brings it down to five to ten seconds. So, it improves Roosevelt, but it slows down State Street. And that's what we want to make sure that by slowing down State Street, we're not causing problems with those signals on there.
There's also a fair amount of pedestrian traffic that goes across there because you have, I mean, the best in traffic seems to be more on Garfield or on Roosevelt. See if, you know, people that are parking in there to go to school or get to the university for whatever reason, and they're crossing at, at that intersection. So, you got a pedestrian issue that we're factoring in as well.
Yup. And there'll, there'll even be, if we put a roundabout at Roosevelt, there'll be induced pedestrians because it'll be, it'll invite them more to go sporadically instead of kind of building up and then going across on there. So, right now, people should be able to cross and traffic would, would stop. But we've got a lot of feedback that people are avoiding it. So, if you put a roundabout in, you're having a little bit of delay on State Street, and then you're having more pedestrians. It's hard to model how that pedestrian interacts.
And we have some increased accidents that are happening there as well.
And, well, and Roosevelt is, is the most accidentally in the intersection in the corridor, even more than Lexington on top of the hill. We put, we fixed, we had significant crash problems at Park Avenue and Summit. That reduced out of one crash. And I forget the numbers on Roosevelt here, but now traffic, the left turners that were out there are going to Garfield. So, we've seen a very slow increase, and they may or may not be related because we only have two years of data from that. But it's a zero-sum game for traffic out of here. I don't think, like when you build the fifty-three freeway, you have a new facility, you have a new traffic that comes in. I think the same number of people are going in and out of campus. So, the gateways, we, we improve safety on one, reduce the movements, so those movements go to different areas. So, now we're trying to improve the safety however we can on the remaining ones. So, overall, there's a crash reduction. So, Roosevelt's really tricky. We, we're really looking at that hard. McKinley, we're not looking at changing anything on McKinley or Garfield, but Roosevelt, we want to make sure that we have a recommendation that we're comfortable with. I was gonna say, if it's not a roundabout, that would... Big problem that we have now is you have two lanes coming down the hill. People that are familiar with it know that you have to get out of that left lane and the right lane. So, you get to go really fast down the hill to get into the right. If you're not familiar with it, you're getting in that left lane, and all of a sudden, you're down there and you're making that move at the left. So, coming out of the roundabout on the top of the hill here, you would come down to one lane of traffic. And there's more than enough capacity with one lane of traffic with no cross-streets and no driveways for a lane of traffic up and down the hill. So, you would have one lane of traffic going down. And then when you get to Roosevelt, you would have a left turn lane that would be dedicated on its own instead of having two lanes going down. So, it would eliminate those rear-end crashes where people aren't paying attention and hitting that car. So, that would be, that's what we want, kind of, we map these out in our minds, what we think will be the, you know, some of the suggestions that we have. That's what we thought initially going into this before. We actually had people saying, "Well, why don't you look at roundabout down here?" I didn't think I'd get much support for roundabout in the Third Ward down there, but we did get quite a bit of support for it. So, that's what we're looking at with that. Maybe something that we stop the project here, and do it here, and then do it temporary. Try that over, over, for a year or so with generating a dedicated left turn lane. It's my hunch that to get the, the volume of traffic through a roundabout here that we need to get, it would involve right-of-way. And I know one of the property owners isn't, isn't a, isn't as euphoric about roundabouts as, as some people are with that. So, if we had to purchase right-of-way and there was not a willing seller, we wouldn't be able to construct it in summer anyway. So...
So, Dave, my understanding is that in order to get, to really improve the sidewalks and turn them more into trails and also potentially get bike lanes on the hill, you would need to have a roundabout at the bottom, right, in Roosevelt?
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to. You wouldn't, you would need it on the top. It would help on the top.
But what about the, so as you get close to Roosevelt though, and you had a, a left turn generated, would you, and you didn't have a roundabout, would you put a, would you recommend a traffic signal then so people could do the left turns more safely, especially out of Roosevelt?
There would be no improvement. We couldn't do an improvement on left turns coming out of Roosevelt unless you put traffic signals in there. And if you put traffic signals in there, especially during peak hours, you're gonna, with the two signals on there, you're gonna have delays that will be starting to get to you, you're going to start introducing delay like you would with a roundabout in there. If you're...
Yeah, because the feedback I've gotten so far is that most people really want a mechanism that'll slow down traffic on State Street because currently, it's very difficult for pedestrians and vice versa to cross safety.
And narrowing it and having one lane going down will help slow it down. You have signals here, you're starting to, you know, you're relatively flat, but you're coming down the hill there, and you have the signals where you would have a dedicated stop is a little bit more concerning than having cars that would be queuing and slowly going through. Looks like you go through the intersection at about eight miles an hour is how the cars stack up when, when it does. If you have, during peak hours, if you have cars queued to here, you'll slowly grind through this roundabout at one, eight miles an hour until you get out of it and you're free and clear on the other side of it. Signals, you're stopped. And depending upon your peak hours or whatnot, if you're not anticipating it. So, we, we hadn't really, and I'm not, I'll have to double-check with Leah, but I don't believe that it meets signal warrants in FHWA and, and design standards. You don't use signals for, you don't just install them for traffic calming. You do it, they have to meet set criteria, otherwise they tend to introduce more crashes than, than less. And the second, the second most dangerous intersection in the route is Garfield that has signals. So, signals don't necessarily mean that you're gonna have, you know, slam dunk safety improvement. So, we have a lot of thinking and internal discussions that we're looking at this stretch here.
So, the roundabout, to an extent, is a question of how large it would be in relation to the delay. So, a slightly larger one would reduce the delay, but you'd have to...
Purchase right-of-way.
Have more property.
Yup. And I don't want to throw something in that, that we're unhappy with now and we're really unhappy with in twenty years. And if you're having congestion, then that ruins your, or it starts to degrade your safety elsewhere if you have frustrated travelers. If you have nice, calm people going through the corridor, that's what you want for pedestrian safety and vehicular safety. But buying right-of-way is a very emotional thing if, if it's involved.
Especially on small lots.
On small lots, you know. And I wasn't here, but I understand it was a fairly emotional process when they purchased right-of-way back in the nineties north of there. I, I try to go into a project, try to improve as much as we can and do as much as we can within the footprint that we have, and then only as a last resort. But that, that will likely be a decision that will be brought forward for values. Do you want to create, you know, what are the trade-offs? Because with this one, there, there are going to be positives and negatives all the way around with that.
I got a call from Bob Carr. He had, he had attempted to try to speak last night. There was some confusion about being able to speak in the public comment period at the end of the meeting. He called me and was, his, his comment was just along the lines of wanting more options instead of the roundabout. He's not, he wasn't a big fan. And he kind of pointed to, "What if we see a lot of increased traffic? And are we, are we, are we decreasing the ability for traffic to get downtown through any of these designs?" And he was kind of concerned about that because he's like, "Well, if you're gonna potentially have a convention center, and there's an increase in people going downtown." So, there was two comments. I just wanted to share them with you. So, he called me earlier today.
The, the up on top, the Putnam Heights, Lexington to Hamilton, zero concern on my, for facilitating traffic and even improving it as traffic grows into downtown. Roosevelt, that is a concern that we're trying to work through. We don't want to create a bottleneck for that. Other options, like I described, where we have a single lane and you generate a left-turn-only lane going into Roosevelt, and your single lane continues through, and you have eventually a left-turn-only that goes here. We had talked about, "Well, what about if we get rid of parking on Garfield and really make this a higher-capacity intersection? Have left-turn lanes on the Garfield all the way, you know, starting from here, all the way down, make McKinley right in, right out." So, you come through here, you could have a pedestrian refuge island here. You wouldn't be able to cross on McKinley. But you'd come down, you'd maintain a single, your, your lanes of traffic here, you'd have all of your left turners out of your through lane of traffic. But then if you're on McKinley, you better get used to coming out and turning left here, or going out to Park, making a right, and getting out that way.
Are people trying to pull out from Roosevelt going northbound into State? Is there a lot of, is that one of the accident places? People trying to pull out? Can you even do that? Yeah, Roosevelt, northbound into State?
There is, you can. The feedback we've gotten is that people just avoid it. They just, they gave up. Same with coming out on Bartlett here. They, they just gave up on it, so we go over to Garfield. So, Garfield has gotten busier with some, some parking summit traffic, not being able to get out here. It's, I mean, it's like...
Improve that turn direction.
You push down somewhere and it comes back up the other direction. So, where it comes up, you want to try and improve it at least and take the, take the peak off of it and make it, you know, a little bit round, more rounded. So, if we had more room here, I think a round, you know, a, a larger roundabout, I would have the same confidence that I do up on top. But we don't, we don't have that right-of-way down there.
So, perhaps in the interest of time, you know, there's a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion, a lot of options being explored. The one last piece that I would mention here is that... The one last piece that I would mention here is that the county is also doing State Street going south down to Rose Creek Road, and we are coordinating this project with them.
They're also doing it 2019?
They're looking at, they had a, they had a mill and fill scheduled for 2019 out there. They would consider, we've had some preliminary talks about the county constructing pedestrian accommodations along their routes too. So that's, that stretch of State Street possibly could look similar to ours, but nothing beyond just talking about, hey, John, I'm trying to get our residents out, my counterpart with the county. So it's something that they're looking at on there, and then we would partner and try to coordinate as much as possible for that for their...
I have one more question, and just for answers for people who are asking. Do the roundabout, the four, three or four roundabouts, do they improve pedestrian and bicycle safety as well? How does, how does that work for people who are trying to move through those without a car?
So the, so the quick answer is yes, they improve it. And how they improve it is they shorten the distance that a pedestrian has to cross. The traffic is typically going slower when they have to cross, and they only have to watch traffic from one direction. So if you were on Gulf Road before this was put in, you would cross 40 feet of traffic with a crosswalk here. Now you cross 12 feet of traffic, only looking one direction, and then you're in a refuge island. And you're in the middle, and you only have to watch traffic coming from this direction, and then you cross again. So it shortens the length you have to be exposed, traffic's going slower, and you only have to be concerned with traffic coming from one direction.
And for bicyclists who are on the street?
The smaller, the feedback we took, especially on State Street, because typically a normal roundabout design, you have a bike lane, you have a ramp to get you off onto a trail, you take the trail around and then you dish back out on the street. They said they're comfortable riding a bike through here and they actually go through as fast as vehicles. So we would run share roads probably through the roundabouts and bicyclists would go through there. They still have the option to go up on sidewalk in the residential neighborhoods as opposed to downtown. So that's how they get through there. And they're, the bicycling community with the ones, especially at the Putnam Heights, feedback was very positive for those.
But Lexington wouldn't have a trail around it?
Lexington would have a trail around because that's a higher acting roundabout than, you know, there's so much traffic on there. But it's still a lot better than here in downtown.
And it'll connect to trails that go up and down the hill too.
Yep. It just, you lose them or you get self at Lexington. You're circling on State Street, you're running sidewalks.
And then on the north end, we lose the enhanced bike and pedestrian space north of Roosevelt or close to Bartlett, so.
Right at Bartlett.
I guess trying to think about how you can get bicyclists through that area to the north is a question.
You're on this, it's without buying right of way. Yeah, it's really tight for those two blocks.
So if we can somehow get bikes onto Wilson and Park or something like that?
That's kind of what we were thinking, you get all to go around for those.
Okay.
All right, so then Water Street, just a mill and fill project, no, two inches, put two inches down. It'll go pretty quick. And then we're going to extend the bike lanes that stop here over the second. And then as we get into this stretch, this use has changed, so you don't have all these drivers coming in here. At some point in the future, the bike lane should get extended down to Third fairly easily without a lot of discussion. And then at some point down the road, maybe once Onitake opens, the discussion will have to be had going through the 400, 3, 4, 500 blocks of Water Street, do you get rid of that decorative median and have bike lanes through there or not? But that's not part of this project. This is just a mill and fill, new pavement, basically a maintenance project. The other stretch of it, 6th to 9th, mill out the top, two inches of pavement, put two inches down, curb and gutter stays, we fix any bumps in the sidewalk. This one, there was a pedestrian that was hit at 7th. So the lights that we are taking out of Black 7 with the redevelopment, we're looking at extending the whiteway lighting. The 30 footers, they won't be the decorative lower ones that you see when you're done with the buildings, but we're looking at extending the whiteway lighting here with the non-decorative 30 footers. They're not ugly, but they're just not the aesthetic ones to try and improve the lighting in this stretch here, following up on that. Because it does get kind of dark over there.
I think at 7th, a lot of this, but there was also pedestrian death like over 10 years ago as well. So just trying to, maybe we could look further into the history of the crash data. Because it seems like we also might want to look at some parking restrictions for returning, for being able to, particularly the buses to turn out of 7th and go left on Route 9. Because it's really hard to see everybody American late to American.
It's something to consider. I'd heard the foliage too makes it a little bit darker with the trees. State Street, we had that feedback also. So that's, that's this portion, not, nothing, nothing all the ordinary with it. Grand Avenue, this was approved last year, the pavement's shot, we're replacing new pavement. The streetscape, they liked the stamped and stained concrete of the gray that was by the Pablo Center last winter, that was replaced with pavers, planting new trees. And then West Grand Plaza, so we'll have nice streetscape street here, we have a new bridge here, and we're going to be proposing work in this plaza. Trail in arrows right now, so we'll have a full width trail, we'll have, you know, a little bit better park space than what is out there currently.
Wasn't it great to have recently, I just remember they shut down for a while for those businesses.
We were only able to get part of it done and we had to stop and...
We had, XL did their utilities out there, and this was closed down for the bridge and we did some DGN out there.
But wasn't it, because I just remember Grand Ave Cafe being, having to go through a period where they weren't...
That was because of the XL.
Yeah, gas and electric. So they were moving theirs in advance of ours, and the bids came in pretty high for that. So this will be nice when it's done. We're gonna try to, this will be after the marathon, so this will be summer through here. The Grand Ave bid is very excited about the project, so. There are some pedestrian improvements made at the intersection of Grand and First Avenue that still facilitate delivery trucks coming in, but makes it a little bit quinter.
Dave, is the bid gonna be doing like racks and that? It's part of that project too?
We have some bike racks included in, I'll have to look at the notes for that. We had some included with West Grand Plaza over there, and I believe they were looking at maybe a few more in the bid along First possibly, but they, I don't know that, I don't recall them wanting some along Grand Avenue. But I'll check the notes because they would have been included in the bid for that.
Okay.
This has got Grant Avenue in the Putnam Heights neighborhood street, as long as we're doing State Street. Pavement's shot, utilities date back to the 50s, so we're replacing utilities, putting everything back the way it is now, has all sidewalk and curb and gutter currently. And then these are the parks and trails for downtown. We have River Walk that we had hoped to get done this year, but we weren't able to with weather. We're gonna ramp up Haymarket Plaza, Hope Gospel Mission Trail, go under Farwell Street and then end in the library. I don't know if we'll get it connected to the Dewey Street Bridge this year or not because that's going to be under construction next year in 2020. If we have money, we're looking at the underpass of Madison Street to connect the Canary Trail or to Oxford. And then the stairs going up the hill by the parking lot, replacing the stairs and the parks there. And then the first part of the, this leg of the trail that will go around Carson Park to get over to our property line that we own back behind it, it'll connect to Carson Park. There'll be, you know, picnic tables and it'll have a connection to this parking lot. So if you want to park in this parking lot, you can get on the trail system there.
Wow.
So other projects, we're gonna wrap up City Hall. Right now, there are some walls in the basement of City Hall that are drywalled and painted. So the Mark and Johnson is moving right along with that, still on track to be done this summer. We want to wrap up Haymarket Plaza probably by July, hopefully sooner, but I've given up on trying to predict what kind of construction weather we'll have. If we'd have had better weather this fall, we'd have had a good chance of getting it wrapped up. And then we're going to be posting soon to update the parking study, so that will have some involvement too going through the spring and summer. Other major projects, Dewey Street Bridge, 2020 will be replaced or will be restored with a new. It'll look like it was back in the 1930s when it was constructed new, same width that's out there.
That's awesome.
Transit Center, potentially.
Just so we're all clear, there's a caveat that then becomes our bridge.
That one's already our bridge out there, yeah. So Lake Street, we have a number of other bridges, as soon as we spruce them up, they're gonna be ours. But that one, that one, so we'll keep that nice arch bridge in downtown for that. We are going to construct the underpass when we're in there, it's the cheapest time to do it under the north end of the bridge. However, we're gonna put panels in there. So when you're on the trail and you're walking by the chamber building, looking towards up river, you won't see an underpass there, but there'll be a concrete panel in there that if that trail does come through with the development at the hip site, we just remove those panels and then it's open. But we can keep the, keep it secure underneath there so we don't have people getting in there. But it adds just a fraction of cost to the bridge to do it now when everything's gonna be tore up anyway. Transit Center, hopefully I, we should be in a position to start constructing in 2020 with that. We have design contracts posted for RFP currently. So depending upon how it works through the process and who knows if there'll be any unforeseen delays, but right now 2020 is, is, you know, something that would be realistic for that. LPR, if, one thing with the parking study, we're looking at possibly working on LPR again, not only on vehicles, but also with our parking structures. So that could possibly be on the docket for 2020 and to help out with parking. And then two large road projects, 21, that we have WISDA funding for, Jeffers Road and Fairfax Street. Jeffers Road will go from a road cross section to an urban cross section, will get storm sewer in it to help accommodate the development up there, bike lanes, a trail that'll connect up to the park. And then Fairfax is work, a joint project with Altoona with, using some WISDA funding to build a three lane twiddle through there instead of a four lane. Similar, so it'll be like Craig Roadlet from Claremont to 37. And then 2022 and 23, we'll be applying for more projects with WISDA funds. And that's really it for what we're doing. I just included some numbers in the back for how our pavement conditions and alley conditions are. 92% of our roads are in good to excellent shape, so we're doing pretty good with our maintenance and our new construction, trying to keep them on schedule. Water main and utilities, we have all, this is out on our website, but our utilities are in pretty good shape. We have pretty much green and blues, if you're looking at the maps, are facilities that are from the 1940s and newer. When we start getting 100 year old utilities, we get really concerned, but we have a map of where those are and the percentages, and those are on our website as well. Infrastructure wise, we've had a pretty good program for a long time addressing these. So it shows that if you go about things in a businesslike manner and you have a plan to continually try to target where you need replacements, whether it be pavements or utilities, you can do it in a fairly sensible manner. Right now with the funding that we're getting, we're able to keep the streets in the condition that people want, and utilities are slowly improving with a younger age for it. And then last, last, I see councilman, Emmanuel's not here. I just put in our special assessments, so you can see how our special assessment rates that the residents are charged, tracked over the last three years. They're based on actual bid prices from your previous. So there is an actual, there are formulas for these that were adopted with the special assessment policy by its resolution. So they've stayed pretty stable. We haven't seen a huge, a huge increase. And then there was a desire from, to look at discussions, but we can have that at another time, but the amount of money that was transferred at the operating budget from some council training to make the redone city council chambers more fun, a few thousand dollars with that, whether it be colors or considerations. Council member Emmanuel was interested in that discussion, she's not able to be here for it.
So just a few things coming up this year.
All right, I tried to be done in 45 minutes, so I'm sorry.
We drank, I don't drink.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912 or TDD 715-839-1689 or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.